What was the last meeting was something that was?
April Fools.
April Fools.
April Fools, oh wow. So what'd you say, everybody was getting a car? Did you tell all the commissioners, I'll y'all get a car? That's what you told them.
Yeah, that was a. Uh, invocation by Commissioner Harris or his designated, and then the pledge allegiance by Carmen Moore Ziegler.
I'm going to probably cover some more first of all, say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord, for another day, another day to, to get it right. Another day to do your will, and do those things that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, we ask that you be with us today as we make these decisions and, and do the business of Montgomery County. We pray that all that we say and all that we do is pleasing to you. We thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, both individually and collectively. And we pray for your continued blessing. In the name of Jesus.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the role, Commissioner Harris.
President.
Vice Chair Moore Ziegler.
President.
Commissioner Stanzel. Commissioner Sankey.
President.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have some recognitions, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Harris, who is Commissioner for District One, better known as State Champions District. He has more state champions from his district than all of us combined, for some reason, Dan, I ain't figured that out yet, but.
He's absolutely right, District One, District One is the District of Champions. I think it's the good Lord's way of rewarding me because I never won a championship when I was in school. But I, I gotta say this morning, though, we are real here to recognize and honor a special group. We have a proclamation here, I'm not gonna try to read the proclamation, but I want to just talk a little bit about this group of people. And I can tell you that your head of school, headmaster is really, really excited about this group of individuals. This is, what, the second year in a row as 5A football champions for Montgomery, for State of Alabama. I don't think, as I understand it, never in the history of Catholic has there been a group of seniors who has gone 55 and two. Never lost a playoff game, sixteen in a row, which forty-three consecutive wins.
Never lost a regular season game.
Never lost a regular season game.
Sixteen playoff wins. Forty-three play, uh, uh, regular season games in a row.
What an outstanding group of seniors, absolutely a bunch of winners, and worthy of the District One Championship Team. Congratulations. I understand that quite a number of you have already signed with colleges. Could you please stand, come on down, come on down, I, I wanna, I wanna introduce the, I wanna do, introduce the crowd to you.
All the players come down.
Yeah, everybody. I'm gonna spend some time with you guys today. Introduce yourself and your position. Alright.
Uh, I'm Garrett Sankey, I'm senior and I'm gonna go play football first. Uh, Wilson Hodges, I've never played football. Uh, Gavin Keen, I'm senior and I'm gonna play at University of Chicago.
Alright. Congratulations, we, we do, like I said, we do have a.
We got, we got more, Dan, there's more.
What about more?
There's more.
Uh, my name's Brody Hudson, I'm gonna play at Huntington University.
Alright.
Uh, my name's Harrison Rogers, and I'm gonna play at Bill Saps University.
My name's Johnny Hager, I'm gonna play this one.
I'm George Washington, I'm going to trade school for it.
Matt, y'all introduce yourselves, even if you're not playing, you should still work.
My name's Edredal, I'm gonna miss it to say.
Go Bulldogs.
What an outstanding group of players, like I said, we have a pro, where are the coaches?
We got the athletic director here and PJ Snowden as well, PJ's one of the. PJ's one of the hardest working folks on Friday night, he's over here as well, and the white and athletic director, Daniel Vares.
Congratulations to you, I mean, really, you have raised an outstanding, have an outstanding group of young men who really are worthy champions. And it is an honor for the Montgomery County Commission to be able to recognize you today with this proclamation, wishing you all the best for your future. We have these, these tokens. Of my appreciation.
Y'all may have to come in a little bit, I don't know.
We don't have one, we have to have one.
Hey, if the taller guy is standing in the back, what guy gets the title, the taller, the taller in the back?
That's what you did, baby, you were practicing.
Do you see this guy back here?
You don't come down from, we're gonna. No, dude.
Congratulations on you, outstanding.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll take the rest of that off, don't worry about it.
Okay, we have public comments, Michael Coleman, CEO, Harder Alabama Food Bank.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come speak, I'm, I'm coming about a matter that's, that is pretty urgent. And most of y'all are familiar in the news with the USDA cuts that have taken place recently, and they have drastically affected us. So I'm coming forward, Commissioner, just to give you this one-page handout that you have right in front of you, that kinda just talks about our impact to the community. Montgomery County, Feeding America just released its latest 2025 map, The Meal Gap, which shows seventeen point seven percent of people in Montgomery County are considered food insecure. It's over forty thousand residents. The problem is, the unfortunate part of that is, over half of those, or half of those are above the snap line, so there's no benefits, there's no help, there's no assistance. And really about the value that we bring is all about, if you think about it from an income gap perspective. Lots of times, there's things that people, you gotta pay your electricity, you gotta pay all, your rent, you gotta pay all those things. But people, you, will cut back on food, and we know seniors do, and we know children are affected. By us pouring in the amount of food, which did just in Montgomery County in the past twelve months, is four point seven two million pounds of food. And that equates to almost four million meals. Feeding America calculates that a meal, the same amount of food purchased for every meal is four dollars and twenty-one cents. In other words, the amount of food that we're providing just from Montgomery County is, if you went and bought it at a grocery store, would be over sixteen million dollars. That's what we're injecting into Montgomery County. We do that at a direct cost of almost eight hundred thousand dollars, that's just from Montgomery County. But we can take donations from Publix and through donated items, and we can produce, instead of four dollars and twenty-one cents per meal, we can do five meals for every dollar, is what we can do. So obviously, the resources that we have will be able to make a greater impact. But this past year, even before the new administration came in, we've been cut significantly, six hundred thousand dollars in funds that we would have had are now gone. From the USDA TFAP, CSFP, and our LFPA program, the LFPA program was eliminated, CSFP had sixty-five seniors cut. And the TFAP admin funding was reduced for a total of about six hundred thousand, not to mention about two million pounds of food that would come in from USDA, those trucks, we just got notice, those trucks are canceled. So, no reason, we, we don't know. But I'm coming before you is because we have a burden just from Montgomery County of almost eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and so we're coming to ask for help because the bottom line is, we, they simply do not have the capacity to make up that difference. And so the result's gonna be, is we're gonna have to cut, because we serve thirty-five counties. And Montgomery County by far gets the most amount, as they should, because of the residents they have. But cuts are gonna have to be equitable across the whole thing, so every county is gonna have to be cut if we aren't supplementing that in some way. So out of eight hundred thou, almost eight hundred thousand that we're doing, the city has agreed, Mayor Reed and I met, he has agreed to supply a hundred thousand. We're asking the county for the same amount, and that's twenty-five percent. The other, the other amount we raise on our own through grants, through fundraising, that we pay the burden ourself. So, we're coming through to let you know, this is, the major takeaway is, I put on the chart right here. We're an organization, we have forty-five people, we pay living wage employment, we're second chance people, as a matter of fact. We have a guy just getting released out of prison, he's coming to work for us next week, that we know, he's gonna be making fifteen fifty with a hundred percent medical dental. We are a great opportunity and a great asset to not only Montgomery, but to the other thirty-five communities. But we're making a plea that the county can help us in a significant way overcome these federal cuts, because we simply cannot make it up on our own.
Michael, can, I'm, I'm gonna apologize for cutting you short, but I wanna make sure my.
That's all I need.
Have any questions that they may wanna ask?
State the ask again, what's the dollar amount?
Hundred thousand.
Michael, with all requests that we have, are you, can you provide us with financials for the food bank and everything?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you would, make sure that.
Absolutely.
Tammy, or Teresa back there behind the double monitors, make sure she get those for us, so, thank you for doing that. Thank you, Michael.
Any other question? Thank you.
I just, I just wanna say, Michael, thanks for speaking, I, you know, haven't been to the food bank and seen what you guys are doing, the work that you're doing, the service you provide, the people you impact, the way that you do it. I don't know that there's another food bank that operates the way that we do, and you guys are certainly the gold standard. These, these financial cuts are outside of your control, and I would like to say to the public, when we, when we talk about funding organizations to go and do service, funding organizations to have, you know, community programs and impact. This isn't just a, this isn't just a program, this is a, this is a staple, this is how our, our community lives. And so, maybe it's something that the, that the commission considers making a budget amendment versus trying to find money out of, out of designated balance. Because a hundred thousand dollars is more than we can afford from those pools, but there's no reason that we can't consider making. Make, making a change to the budget, that would be.
I totally agree, because we can't, and, and they didn't want you to walk away, because it was dead silence when you walked away. I think everyone here, because I even heard Commissioner Harris sigh when you said the trucks were cut out, I think each one of us understand the plight. And don't walk away thinking that we don't hear you, and don't walk away thinking that we're not gonna do anything about it. We are, we'll put our heads together and figure out how we'll come up to help you, because, you know, it's all, it's just not one district, it's all our district, it's all our people. And we have got to, and my thing is that we don't want anyone to go to bed every night, and any one of our, nowhere in Montgomery County hungry, no child, no parent, nobody to go hungry. And so we will come together to figure out how we can help you, and I agree with you, can we sit down and talk about maybe this being, because I think we all have talked about looking at the budget anyway of some of these people that we fund, and, but we know we have to fund you, there's no doubt.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Michelle Jackson, Carter Hill neighborhood. Michelle Jackson, is she still here?
Oh, she's coming around. As she's coming down, we are gonna have some fourth graders joining the meeting.
I see them coming in, looking all cute.
They've just left the archives, and they are coming through the county commission, they're gonna fill any open seats, fourth graders are welcome. This is exciting, we'll continue business, but welcome, Michelle.
Good morning. I would like, and, and my request is for the Board of Commissioners for a sidewalk for Carter Hill Road from the area of North Country Club Drive to Mulberry. And, and the reason for that, there's a senior citizen home, and there's a lot of disabled seniors, there's disabled veterans, and this is a major street, and. They don't have a safe passage as they travel to, most of them are going to Winn-Dixie Shopping Center, you know, to buy food. And that's a major street where, you know, it's a lot, it's a high-volume traffic area, and so I was here to request the board for a sidewalk. And currently, the city is putting in, replacing the water pipes along that road now. And so while the road is, is broken and torn up, you know, if you all would consider it's a great time before they repair. The streets.
It's the city right of way.
City has to do the sidewalks.
Oh, they have to do the sidewalk? Okay, cuz I did inquire with them, and they were, they was, they said, talk to the commissioner.
You know, you know, it's a, Carter Hill Road is really, really, I mean, there, there's a lot of politics in that street. Really, I mean, it's, it's, it has something to do with the federal government, you have to talk to them, the city, and the state, you know? But I know that those, those right of ways you're talking about, that's city though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, excuse me, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do you think it might help if Mr. Jackson spoke with the Montgomery Metropolitan Planning Association, organization, rather, as relates to her concern regarding the sidewalks?
You're a city, are you Arande Mitchell or CC Calhoun, Dan, who's, Dan, who's the city, city count, who, who's her city councilman, is it Arande or?
That's CC.
Or CC?
It's shared between CC and Samaskin, it's both of them.
It's pretty close.
Well, it's, it's between those two.
It's pretty close, they share a bit of it.
Yes.
Yeah, talk to, have you talked to CC personally?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Speak with him.
Please, yes, ma'am.
They do sidewalk.
Reach out to both of them, actually, I would do him, Samaskin, and President Calhoun.
Because Commissioner Sankey had mentioned the MPO, and, and CC's a part of the MPO, Metropolitan Planning.
Okay.
He may be able to help you through that too, so.
Alright, thank you so kindly.
Thank you. We wanted Anna Buckle to come during the information session, but we got running behind a little bit, so Anna Buckle, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, I will be brief, cuz I know you're compressing your time this morning. I had wanted to come and just give you an update, it just, coincidence that we have some other items on the agenda this morning as well, but this was strictly to give you an update, particularly talking about some recent economic development progress, give you some impacts from that. But also to talk about a lot of the work that we've been doing to identify and working with an economic development consultant, what are the things that we have to do to sustain the momentum? We talk about the momentum that we have generated from so much partnership and good work, the investments that you all have made, but how do we, how do we sustain it? Because we have to be ready for what's next, and the one thing that our consultant that we work with, and some of you have been in meetings with NINograt Partners, Kevin Hively, he does a great job of just looking at what the data tells us. And the data tells us that we, we are running out of capacity in terms of sites for new companies, we've gotta be prepared. We've got some fundamental things that, that, to quote him, you won't be able to get to where you want to be as a city and as a county if you don't do these things. And so, Tammy, you think it's from where? Oh, you gotta do it right here, I'm so sorry. I was thinking you were doing it back there. Okay, I'll be super fast, if I can make this work, there we go. So, just a reminder, as far as the chamber, again, the partnership with the county, we greatly appreciate, are very proud of that partnership to serve as the economic development arm and the tourism arm of the county of Montgomery. These are the three core areas that we are focused on, targeted economic development, and that is smart economic development that leverages the assets we have, it's not a shotgun approach, it's very targeted. So it's leveraging military and DOD more than we've ever done, it's leveraging the infrastructure that we've put in place with the inland port, it's leveraging the advanced manufacturing community that we have here and how to build on from that. And the tech and innovation sector that we've really focused a lot of time on, I don't think many people know, Tech MGM, led by Sharice Stokes, who's part of our team, is a part of the chamber's economic development work. Talent and workforce, we have to have talented people wanting to choose Montgomery to live and raise their families, and to your point this morning, we want people not just working in Montgomery, we want them living in Montgomery. And then tourism and the experience, tourism is a tremendous economic engine, and we actually under-exploit what that can do in terms of lining the coffers of the city and the county, and driving other related development downtown, which will fuel continued investment, and that's a quality of life enhancement. We must do quality of life, as you have led the way with Whitewater. So the track record tells you, Governor Ivey just released her Commerce Report, see there, our friend Ella McNair, now Secretary of Commerce, this was, of course, taken at the Meta announcement. Montgomery has consistently performed, leading in the state among the metro communities in terms of job creation, retention, and capital investment. This was 2024's report, we were number four for new projects in the state, total jobs from new projects, second in the state, total capex from a new project, Meta, number one in the state of Alabama. Total jobs created, number four in the state, and total capital investment, number two in the state of Alabama. That's kinda hard to read, but it breaks it down, and I'll make sure you all have access to this, that the total investment there, that one point one billion, that's combined investment, new and expanding, even among those projects in terms of capital investment, number two in the state of Alabama. And that's the four hundred ninety-seven, I mentioned some five hundred jobs, net new jobs, what they consider non-agricultural jobs, created last year that were net new. That one project we discussed earlier today was six hundred plus jobs, so that tells you the impact of, of what we're talking about, and how important your leadership is. This shows that track record, over time, and it's, again, hard to see, I'll send this to you, 2019 to 24, you've got consistent leading the state, and particularly in '22, number two in the state, and number one in the state in job creation, that was our Hyundai expansion, with fifteen hundred additional new jobs in Montgomery County. And again, that partnership is what makes us so successful. This is a graphic that really shows you the impact of focused economic development with partners and the right infrastructure, and how you have to have the right infrastructure to grow. Putting that inland port in, which took many years of working and planning and bringing Hyundai to the table, we had to have a customer for CSX before we could do anything, then we had to get the port engaged, we knew we had the city and the county. Your partnership means so much, well, we go to partners like the state and the railroad to say, we're ready to do this, and our industries. Look at all those numbers, and you definitely can't read this, cuz I can't read it without my glasses, but it has all the totals, Amazon, Manah, Diageo, the FedEx expansion, that many of you went to that opening down in, in Industrial Park down there in Hope Hall. The inland port, I think a lot of you were at the opening of that, the groundbreaking for that, were very excited, ninety million dollars worth of infrastructure in that project. Think about the spin-off impact that will generate, but we have to be ready. So, talking about being ready, and this is what we've been working on at the chamber, how do we sustain that kind of growth? And how are we prepared to make sure we can grow that and leverage it for even further advancement? So I will tell you, these are the challenges we've identified as the things we've got to tackle, and some of them are hard and they're big things. But together, and I think some of the most rewarding things that we see at the chamber is, whether it's the county commission, the city council, city hall, our legislative delegation, our federal delegation. Everyone is united around wanting growth and prosperity in Montgomery County, and so that, that is the thing that aligns all of us. I'll start with this first, and it's a tough one, and I could talk to you a long time, and I won't. You may remember I came to you when we were losing our last superintendent to appeal to the county, make you aware of the efforts we had made with the Board of Education to make sure, A, we didn't lose them, and B, if we did, that they realize the severity and the consequences of the, the leadership role on their shoulders to make a good decision moving forward. We are not in a good place in terms of how we feel like the situation is headed, the school board has made a decision. Anytime you have a four-three vote to make a decision on a leader that's that important to lead the, the children in this community, and it's split that much, that does not send the right signal. A four-three voice is not unity, there was a lot of talk about unity at last board meeting, and I did not see a lot of unity. But I will tell you, I had a business meeting yesterday at the chamber, and we had the leading business and company folks sitting around the table in the big room at the chamber. Two and one, I said, how are we still in, this is gonna be hard, because if we're in now on education, we're disappointed at what just happened, and we don't feel like we've got the kind of leadership our school system and our kids deserve, are we in? The business leadership says we have to do this, we have to stay hitched, we have to stay in, and we have to align with the city and the county, they've been so proud of the alignment that we've had around this issue, let's keep pressing for excellence. That one, we've got to work on, number two, this is a project, but it's also a driver, the Capitol Maxwell Gateway, we're asking for some federal funding for this project. This is not a new bridge over the river, but this is a new entrance into downtown, it is an entrance into Whitewater it so desperately needs. It would direct traffic with signaling and a new piece of road that comes kinda behind the gas station, directly into where Whitewater's entrance is, so that traffic does not have to do three left turns to make a right turn at that interchange. This one is important, and it will drive tourism, and Maxwell is very excited about this project, they actually asked us to commission that study that the county and the city helped us with on the traffic flow. Number three, catalyzing downtown, this is all about creating and fueling those economic engines that we have. We have to leverage the things that we have assets in, like the military, like our history and our heritage on downtown, the investments of EJI, the investment of Whitewater. But how do we market it, how do we promote it, we've got a tie from Maxwell Boulevard, the gate at Maxwell, all the way down to the core of downtown, and a lot of work is being put into that. It's gonna take combined support to do what we need to do, but we can do it, if you look at other communities that are leading the way, recruiting new talent, recruiting doctors, recruiting industries, they are doing the things it takes to recruit folks. Montgomery Regional Airport, probably in terms of infrastructure that grows industry and tourism, this is your biggest. Montgomery Regional Airport, probably in terms of infrastructure that grows industry and tourism, this is your biggest project. The airport has got to be at a whole new level of operations, both in terms of the experience in the terminal and the infrastructure they have. Right now, we've got a dual-use runway that supports CF-35, and it's in not good shape. It's got to be resurfaced. We're leaving here to go talk to our legislative, legislative, excuse me, delegation about that for some support. This, I believe, together, and I've had conversations with city leadership also, I think the city's very interested in embracing with the county a partnership around the airport. This is the perfect type of project. The city and the county together could make an enormous difference. To include subsidizing flights, knowing that we need another flight to DC. You have to do things to recruit airlines, just like you do to recruit industry. We believe we've got to focus some attention on that. Military and defense, I hope you all know how much time we spend on military and defense at the chamber every day. We are guarding those missions and growing those missions. We just went through submitting things to the federal government and our congressional delegation, like making sure we get all of our helicopters for the MH-139, like making sure that we had the flight simulators for the F-35. Those things don't just happen. That's a lot of what we do to make sure the missions can be successful. We are looking right now at developing a strategic basing study that we will need the city and the county's partnership on, because we've got to be prepared with a new mindset in Washington, and you heard about it earlier, with cuts. How do we show, and we're ready to show that we have capacity at Maxwell Gunner to expand mission and actually create jobs and not lose jobs. The Capitol Logistics Quarter, and this is big. We talked about the inland port. But the fact that the inland port also needs to be connecting those tractor-trailers. So we believe still that the Outer Loop Project for the I-685 extension, as I call it, that's important. We've got to have continuous infrastructure. We've got to have air service. We've got to have the port. And we've got to have good surface transportation that, that gets rid of a lot of this traffic. You have a wallahatchee paving on your list today, I noticed. A lot of that wallahatchee traffic is trying to cut from the Troy Highway over to Vaughn Road, most likely. And I think I've seen a lot of that traffic increase. So we've got to be mindful of the big things that move the needle and will create jobs, will fund education, and grow our community. In addition to that, we need to look at identifying new economic development sites. I have really tried to go fast, Mr. Chairman, but I hope that was helpful. I can't tell you how proud we are to represent the county.
Any questions for Anna?
Thank you so much.
I'd just like to say thank you. These are really, really helpful, you know, and, and looking forward to the next one.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. I'll make sure I'm back more often, every time you'll have me. Thank you.
Thank you for the promotion.
And some of the projects that Anna talked about just now was some of the stuff that we have discussed in the past too. So trying to find funding mechanisms to be able to execute these. So Kendall, I think that is all the comments from the... So we do have a public, a public meeting to discuss matters related to Project Tractor. I hereby call the meeting open. Is there anybody here to comment on Project Tractor? No comments? Meeting closed? Presentation of minutes.
All right. Item number one, consider minutes of the regular meeting of April the first, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Wait a minute, I can't see.
Ooh, you seem to get it.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Did you have it?
I registered my poll.
We got four out of five. Waiting on Commissioner Sankey.
There we go.
Item number two, consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move approval.
Second.
Tammy, I messed up again.
Was that you on a fishing website?
He on the, he on the homepage.
I thought it was a fishing website he was on. He telling us where he want to be today.
Trying to change my screen, try to be cute.
He trying to be cute. Look at you, cute.
New glass is not working out for him.
No, his new glass is not working out for him.
I can see everybody out there. Motion carries.
Item number three, consider unbudgeted position fair request for Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant.
Move for approval. Motion carries.
Item number four, consider inmate excess medical policy renewal.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number five, consider 2025 Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program Grant Application.
Move approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number six, consider, excuse me, consider independent contractor agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Item number seven, consider 2025 Revised Commission Meeting Schedule.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider bid award to Siemens Healthcare Diagnostic Incorporated for drug testing laboratory equipment and supplies.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number nine, consider bid award to Transportation South Incorporated for a 2025 L.A. West Mercedes Sprinter.
Move approval. Although I didn't get my G-Wagon.
Me either. I was wondering what that.
Y'all can have one, but there are some.
Second.
Legal stipulations y'all gonna have to figure. Item number 10, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies to include $350 from Commissioner Harris, Moore-Ziegler, Costanza, and Singleton for Leadership Montgomery.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number 11, consider miscellaneous appropriations to education to include $750 for the Johnny Carr Tennis Program from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler, $1,000 from McIntyre, to McIntyre for teacher's appreciation from Commissioner Sankey, and $5,000 to Percy L. Julian from Commissioner Sankey as well.
Move approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number 12, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue to include $350 from Commissioner Sankey for Leadership Montgomery. Alabama Dance Theater, $5,000 from Commissioner Harris, 2,500 from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler, 2,500 from Commissioner Costanza, $2,000 from each commissioner for the Boys and Girls Club, and $1,000 from Commissioner Moore-Ziegler to the Echo Program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number 13, consider travel and training requests for the commission, the DA, the revenue commission, risk management, and sheriff.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes.
We have two wave rule items. Item number 14, consider master auto mechanic.
No objection. Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Well, I'm waiting on, y'all waiting on me?
It's showing me that somebody needs to move it.
Move it. I'm waiting on the move.
Oh, it didn't pop up on your.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have it?
It's up on everybody else's screen.
I'm gonna try, I'll try to move it and see what happens.
Go ahead.
I'll move.
Nothing happened for me when you moved it. It still says I need to move it. Okay, I'm second it.
Motion carries.
Item number 15, consider resolution regarding Project Tractor.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Those are all of our items.
Mr. Attorney?
I just want to thank the commission, the staff, and administration. As you know, that this is my last commission meeting, and I've submitted my letter of resignation effective Friday, April 25th. Y'all been awesome. Kendall, appreciate you. So I just want to tell you, y'all, y'all are top-notch, and it's been an honor, and I'm grateful for being able to work with you guys.
Well, we definitely, worst news I've heard in a long time, when Michael told me the other day, along with all the other commissioners, that he had accepted a position with, staying in the family, I guess, with the... Can I say where you going?
Sure.
The Alabama County Commission Association, so he'll be still a part of us. Broke my heart for him to leave. He brings so much to us, not only from legal, but he also was a commissioner and also a chairman of a commission here in Alabama, and had done a wonderful job for us. But it's a good move for him personally and for his family. And as much as we hate to see him go, we sure appreciate everything he's done for us, and we want to, what's best for him and his family. And fortunately, he'll still be close by, in touch, and he won't change his cell phone or block my calls because we'll still be talking consistently.
As far as he knows.
My deputy administrator?
No, sir, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Michael, we're gonna miss you. But you're not going that far, and you're not gonna get out of that golf game. You know, it was really, really a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with you. I, I first met you when I was trying to get you to come to Montgomery County. Good friend of ours had, had told me about this wonderful lawyer who he thought would be perfect for Montgomery. And I always trusted this guy's judgment, and he was absolutely right. He was perfect for us. And you could tell Sonny I'm gonna get him next time I see him. But good luck, you know, good luck on your endeavors, and this is always home. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Back here. And I'd like to say again, congratulations to those champions out at Catholic High School, the 5A football champions for two years in a row, and we're looking to three-peat this year. Nothing's too good for the district of champions. And again, welcome, welcome to the, the fourth graders that we have here today. We haven't heard from them, Mr. Chairman.
I would wait on Justin to kind of get to that one.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to hear from these, that's a beautiful young group out here, you know, and a group of future leaders. Like to hear from them. And thank you all for coming this morning.
Vice Chair, Moore-Ziegler.
Um, Michael, thank you for your leadership and guidance during being here with us. We are truly gonna miss you. But as I told you, when you call me, I understand. You know, they, they always come for the good ones, and they came for you, so I understand that. I'll, and I wish you well. I don't, I wasn't here last commission meeting to welcome our deputy administrator, Ms. Regina Walker. I am so proud that you are our deputy administrator. I look forward to the growth that you and our county administrative Kendall Anderson will take Montgomery County. And that amounts to the word that the wise man.
Commissioner Costanza.
You heard that, wise man, especially to the fourth graders. I'll start by saying thank you to Michael. You made my transition, you know, I'm the, well, I was the new guy, but there's a lot of new guys up here now. You know, the, the county is indebted to you, and your expertise will be missed. Your friendship is law, is leaving but not lost, so we're glad that you're gonna be close by. And when I see Sonny, I might have a few words for him, but he knows he got a good one. Thank you, Michael, for, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Ultimate professional. Montgomery County is grateful for you. And real quick too, we've got a lot of folks from the chamber here today, and I know we've had folks here every meeting from the chamber, but really want to say thank you for the presentation, for the work that goes in. You know, Sharon and Shelby and, and, and the work that you guys are doing here, all the time behind the scenes, and Anna getting up today in a great presentation. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work to make a five-minute presentation sound, you know, quick and easy. And so I am, I'm proud that we moved forward on Project Tractor today. I'm proud of what you guys are doing to, to cement the future of Montgomery. We have to make decisions based on what, what will be, and it takes trust, and so we have to trust you guys. And so I do, and I appreciate the work that you put in, and Montgomery's better for you, so thank you guys for that. Football was here, it was exciting, you know, stay tuned. Montgomery Catholic will be back next time with the varsity flag football state champions, which is very exciting. We're excited to host the Trinity basketball champions, the girls' team, the Montgomery Academy Basketball Boys Championship. We've had, we've had quite a run here, all in District One. Whatever, whatever is happening in District One.
Clark Crossing Girls were here already.
Clark Crossing Girls. We remember how fast they got here too. I'm just saying. I love it now. With, it's been, it's been great, it's been great. So, so, so much good stuff happening. And fourth grade, Ms. Sarah Wilson's fourth grade from the St. Bede Campus of Montgomery Catholic is here. And I want to go on record, all schools are welcome to come participate. I mean, we are flooding, Montgomery Catholic is flooding this place. We're trying to share the good news of county government. Fourth graders, will you guys stand up real quick? Yeah, you guys look so good. I am so proud of y'all. Thank you to Ms. Wilson and all the adults in the room who got them here and you guys. I won't ask you any county government questions. When we get done, the Sheriff's Department is gonna talk to us real quick, and we'll get to meet and greet a little bit and share a little bit about what we are actually doing up here. So you're almost done. You did great, and so su- super proud of you guys. Thanks for being here. And then just the, my final comments, I can't, you know, this is Holy Week, and this is a very, very special time. So to the community, for us to just not forget that on Thursday, the same man that would die on the cross for us washed our feet and broke bread one last time at the Last Supper Friday, was crucified on a cross for me and for you. Laid in the tomb Saturday, and Sunday, we're given the gift of, of grace through the resurrection. And so cannot, cannot ignore the fact and the gravity of that. And so through all of that, we have an opportunity to do the humble things that we do here each day. And so enjoy your Easter season as Lent comes to an end and the triduum begins.
Commissioner Sankey?
Let the church say amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
Michael, thank you so much for all the research that you did for me on behalf of, you know, my constituents. I'm still looking through a lot of that stuff that you provided. I appreciate it. And hopefully you won't change your cell phone number, so we'll be able to get in touch with you.
You may be on the, the borderline on that.
It's okay. It's all right. It's all right. Borderline is better than no line. No, and, and so as you all are probably aware, April is Fair Housing Month. The Fair Housing Act.
Uh, the Fair Housing Act was, uh, passed, uh, April 11th, 1968. And unfortunately, it took the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to get that act out of committee. And so we want to commemorate, uh, the month of April, it's been a fair housing month. Uh, and in line with that, uh, my office, County Commission District Four, is hosting our second annual housing summit that will take place on Thursday, this Thursday, April 17th, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Maga Street Family Life Center, which is located at 642 Maga Street here in Montgomery. We have a number of community partners who are engaged in making sure that we have safe, stable, healthy homes. Uh, just a number of people will be there and I'll just list a few. The Black Belt Unincorporated Wastewater Program that has to do with alternate, uh, sewer treatment modalities. Septic tanks, we're talking about, uh, Ms. Sher Bratley, uh, the former director of, uh, the Alabama Public Health Environmental Services will be there. And they actually have monies available for those individuals, uh, households that are on septic tanks. And if you qualify based upon income guidelines, you can get a septic tank installed at no cost to you. And if you have any idea of what it is to have a bad septic tank, the soil is not taking on the waste, that can be a major problem in terms of health and wellness. So she will be there to talk about, uh, alternative sewer treatment, uh, systems. We have Alabama Housing Finance Authority, Central Alabama Aging Consortium will be there to talk about home modifications for the elderly. And new this year, we have the Manufactory Home Commission of Alabama. And of course, uh, manufactory homes can be an option, uh, to save stable housing. So you all are invited to come out, uh, to this second annual housing summit. Again, that's Thursday from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Maga Street Family Life Center. Uh, and the theme this year is safe, stable homes, steps to better health. So thank you and we'll look forward to seeing you all. Thank you, Ms. Jamie.
Thank you.
Hey Doug, real quick, in honor of Commissioner Sankey, you know, he's a big fan of the Red Sox at AUM. And today, we actually have a very famous Red Sox player in the audience. Last night, Mr. Mason Bell, who is on the Sankey Red Sox team, hitting over the fence home run. He's standing right there.
Where is he?
Stand up, Mason, come on, don't be rude. Yeah, how about that? That's a big deal.
Yes. Yes.
It's a big deal.
It is a big deal, thank you.
And I know you love the Red Sox, I just wanted to know, you are in the presence of greatness.
Know that about it.
Okay, all right.
Mason, how old are you, 10? 10, that's quite a accomplishment, that's a 200-foot fence too, right? Wow, that's for a 10-year-old to hit over that 200-foot fence is quite an accomplishment. Uh, fellow commissioners, a lot of upcoming events, everybody has the sheet. For the general public, applications for the summer apprenticeship program will close on April the 18th. Um, Michael, you do need to realize that now you do work for the county because if it wasn't for 67 counties, there would be no ACCA. We pay dues to be in that way. So if you cut that phone off, we're gonna cut that.
He just gonna block you, he didn't say he was cutting it off, he gonna block you.
That's a thought. Mr. Chairman walked by my office and waved goodbye to me this morning.
I did. I hate, I hate that he's leaving. He is. With no further, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye? Aye. Meeting adjourned.